And to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, be the peaceful, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start. Sorry. Okay, can I get an approval of the present agenda?
Motion.
Second. Anyone with any questions?
It could, it could wait. I have one question. I see a really extensive motion to rescind on policy. Did we? Is there a matching adoption?
I was going to, I was going to address that, that I could do that now if you would like, that's, there is some feedback.
Are we, I don't know, yeah. If it's gonna impact the agenda, then we should talk about it now, then.
Yeah, very brief.
Alright, so with the policy rescissions, there's two categories of policies. After we've completed the compliance piece, there are some that were deemed just informational, did not rise to the level of being quote policy, they were just informative. So we are going to set those aside, put them somewhere on the website, make it available, but it just really wasn't policy. The second set were policies that were folded into other policies. We were just trying to eliminate the large volume and there were a lot of places where they could be tucked in under the heading of one policy. So that's every one of those, or one or other of those. So they're still going to be around, but either located in none of their location, or as information said. Does that answer the question?
Uh, so they're, they're not going to be legally binding essentially is where we're at with these.
Correct, we have over two board meetings, we have adopted policies. Right now, we have two sets of policies that are saying the same thing. So we're really in a redundancy right now. So this is cleaning that up. It's getting rid of the ones, we have already adopted the ones that have the information that we need, the policy that we need is actually tucked into a policy that we have adopted. So we're covered, we're just, it'd be too much now, we need to just clean up all the details. Okay, okay. So all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Hey, we're in public comments. The public may address the board at this time. Do we have anyone?
Right now?
Give them a minute, see if anyone wants to come. See, we're on the board member comment. Anybody have anything?
Uh, well, I would definitely like to express a sincere thanks to the Grandberg Estate. That was a pretty special gift for our program.
I think that the work is coming along pretty nicely. The roof, I can understand it's done. Um, and, uh, and the rooms look like they're ready to be painted, or pretty close to. Uh, so I'm excited about the beginning of the new year coming to make sure.
When, when we get a type of a, a gift like we just got. Who takes care of writing thank yous for that? And do we just?
That district office sense, thank you, thank you, notes. Comes out of the district office, yes.
I just learned something. Good question, Ariel. Um, I had written down, um, I was gonna talk about the rescinding policies. Also, I looked at our consent agenda with all of the coaches, uh, people that are stepping up to volunteer. I know, you know, there's a little stipend for them, but the volume of time that these coaches put in for our, our students is, um, is worthy of note, and I wanted to say thank you to them for their contribution. Okay, so we're at the student representatives report.
I want to say that everyone who I've talked to recently, and myself included, uh, is very excited for the spring to start, and I feel like a lot of that comes from you guys in school. I mean, I'm about to break through that everything, if it's time to come back for the first senior year, kids are challenging.
That's fantastic. I'm really happy to hear that. A lot of exciting things going on. It is, this, this is going to be an interesting year. I'm very excited for that, too. I'm glad that that's communicated down to the students. That's wonderful. Thank you. On to the superintendents.
Alright, so tonight I've got a couple of things I want to go through. We'll start with the capital project. Here's to pull up the first picture. Okay, so got an aerial view of, so the roof is finished, um, all the, the rubber material is laid down, so you can see the picture, all the areas, everything, this whole roof is covered with new material. Um, the one thing that they still have to do is put the metal siding to, you know, to finish the sides and all that, but right now it's all protected. The siding is gonna be done after the EFS, that exterior insulation project, they have to do where the white areas are around the, between the roof and the brick. Um, so until that's done, they're not gonna touch those areas, but some of the areas don't have the EFS, you can see in the back here, uh, where the arrow is actually right now. So they can work on that, but I was happy to see, you know, obviously we've had a lot of problems with this roof over the I've been here 12 years and I don't know how many years it's been, so it's great to have that. Then one other thing I just wanted to show from zero views, you can see the by the track, we did get the other, uh, triple jump pit in, so we have the long jump, the farther one, and then the triple jump, those are the white areas, those have been metal actually covering the sand. Um, so I was, I want to thank our staff for doing that, uh, spirited that up. That was last year, we started one and we got the other one done, but you know, that, that needed major upgrade in all the years that that, you know, those those pits were not very good, so kids, you know, got to use the long jump last year, they loved it, got the white sand, it doesn't hurt anymore, jumping in it. Uh, but now we got the other one, and so I was very happy with that. So that's the roof part. As I said, that's pretty much done except for the mobile, it, we're starting the year as is with that, that's fine. If you go to the next picture, let's do the outside then, or there's the front entrance, um, we closed down now because so you can see on the right where the guys are standing, those are gonna be the two, uh, those are the flings for the two pillars that are gonna go up there. And then that white pad, you kind of see that white area with the dirt, that's gonna be filled in, so those areas are all gonna be filled in concrete. Then we're gonna have those metal poles come up, and then that's gonna have that roof cover, the canopy over that whole area. So that's gonna cover quite a bit of area, um. So the goal is to pour the concrete tomorrow, um, and then, and they're gonna see what they can get done. We're gonna have brick under, when we have the metal poles, we'll have brick around it, it'll look nice, and then the canopy, so not quite sure they're gonna be able to get that done before school, but they're gonna get as much done as possible, and maybe work weekends or nights, we'll figure out sometimes if they can do a little more work. Obviously, the main thing is to get the concrete poured and filling all the, obviously the dirt and all that has to be filled in, and the sidewalk put together, so we, when we start school, it's all safe, but so that's moving along, that's something we weren't looking at doing at all, so that was another add-on, which is one, you know, all we were gonna do this summer and Sal was here when his last meeting was at the roof, so that's excellent that they got a big start on this, and we're, we're gonna probably get a lot of that done, uh, beginning of the school year. So they're gonna have the two, they're gonna fill that in, those are the flooded concrete, and they're gonna have holes coming up to hold the canopy.
Yes.
So they'll be, yeah, and then the poles will be surrounded with brick, so it looks nice, and then the canopy will come out and over to that other, the pole, other pole will be there. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty good size, pretty good area to chand on her, obviously, and they put that together, it should look really nice.
That's, that's not for this year though, right?
Well, I think what the goal is to pour that, and that we're gonna see what they can do before school, and then if they can do a little bit of work, um, you know, weekends and stuff, we might arrange to do that if possible, so that'd be wonderful, we could get that done into September or something, but I can't guarantee any of that, but at least it's a good start. Then we have the interior areas, um, so we weren't gonna do these also, these are the six rooms, so this we started painting, which is great, put up the drywall, they painted that room today, then they're gonna paint the, you know, paint all the rest of the rooms next couple days. They did the cabling, you can see the green cable, but they did the cabling, a lot of the rooms for the, for the power, for the boxes, that's been done over the last couple days. Um, and then we're gonna have to have the drop ceiling, you know, finish the lights, and then tile the floor. So we're still on track, but you know, obviously it's a very tight schedule, and the goal is to get done by, actually next Wednesday. So we can then clean and, and then clean, clean the tiles and, and seal the tiles with, you know, with our guys and get the stuff in here. So that's moving along, that's obviously the major one, because that's the that's the six classrooms that have to be done. We're gonna reuse the doors, um, that we had, and then we have nice maple doors coming in, but obviously we'll replace, swap those out when they come in. So that'll be set. And then the last one is the bathroom. And as I discussed, this is gonna go into the school year most likely. But they did come in this weekend, so they did a lot of work, got walls up, got the fixtures set up, um, you know, for, for the, for the bathrooms and the toilet, you know, when they're gonna add all that in. So the goal there too is to get some, you know, maybe tiling will go into the new year and some of that, but they're gonna get as much as they can done before we start school, and then that'll be you know, if that's closed a few weeks into school, it's not, and I talked, it's not a big deal, so that'll be nice to get that done also. So that's another extra thing we were planning. So that's the capital, capital update, um, and then remember in the school year, they might do some of the front entrance still, they're gonna do the EFS, you know, the exterior insulation, that white stuff around the building that's falling apart, they already have done a lot of the wood to put up, the first steps to put up wood, and then they're gonna put something totally over that to create a lot more insulation. So the wood's been in the front of the building, they've gone around the whole front with the wood, they've done the courtyard. So they're moving along quickly on that, and that's work that can be done during the year. Um, the difference is they're gonna have a lot more insulation than what we had now, which will be much better, uh, for moisture prevention. And then the other thing is the, the repointing of the, the mason is here to repoint big bricks, and you know, some of that work, the brick work that needs to be done, that'll be done during the school year too. Um, but I was very happy because we did a lot more than planned in year one. And then what we did order for the teachers is, um, they had some of the bookshelves in these rooms were built in the wall, and they're just pretty flimsy wood, so that's thrown up, we ordered nice bookshelves to match the doors, and I, and, um, if that doesn't get in immediately, we'll figure out what stuff they need to have, and then we'll, you know, the rest of it will store until that comes in, but that should be coming in, you know, either before or right, first few weeks in the school. So that's the capital project. Um, next thing is administrative educator, the, the position that we, we were the new position for innovation curriculum. So I discussed this, I'll say publicly, in 29 applications. Andrew and I met last night, went through all the applications, um, we had input from the principals and assistant principals, uh, they gave their input, we looked at everything all together, and we were gonna bring six candidates in. Six. Six people out of the 29 are paying, um, we thought they were the most qualified, and you know, they have the project. Uh, so then we do the first round of interviews, it'll be August 29th. And then we have a committee of an ME teacher, ME teacher leader, middle school teacher, high school teacher, another teacher leader, and then three principals, and then Andrew, myself. So we'll do the first round of interviews, and then we'll get a smaller committee to take two or three to the final round. Uh, looking at first, I think the first week of September, because that's obviously a very important position, we want to get someone that's qualified and get someone into this position. We're gonna do mine one day. We got that whole team of teachers coming in before school, so we wanted to take advantage of that. I did want to note, we mentioned Judith Grunberg Estate, uh, I always saw Jud- Judith around town, um, you know, she owned the blue plate, PS21, she was on tons of boards, so we're really appreciative of her, her donation for the arts for the school, we will put that in a special account for the arts for our school, but just wanted to say thank you again, that was a wonderful donation, and she was such a wonderful lady, uh, lady that really dedicated and volunteered, all, I saw her all the time in town, which was, which was, which was great. Um, Chatham baseball team, as we mentioned, uh, on August 8th, the Yankees game, they honored our, uh, our players and coaches, three-time state champs, we put that up today, Andrew, our, um, Adam was on vacation, so he did put that up today on that, yeah. Uh, great picture, you know, that was such a great thing, one more time, the team was seven, six, and seven, and the three total runs, and just incredible time here for Chatham. Um, and the last thing, I just got an email, which was we have a sign coming in, so it's there, yes, the sign's ready, um, and I talked with Andy Davie, um, I mean, they're so busy with everything else right now, they need to pick it up. And then it's gonna go in the front, you know, with the, um, the stone is, with the Chatham stone is in the front of the high school. It's gonna go, he worked with JB on that, it's gonna go kind of behind that, and you'll see that right at the front of the school. Obviously, now with all the construction, we're not putting up, but we will get the sign in probably early September. It's on our property.
What's, what's the material of that sign? I'm curious how long it's gonna last.
I'd, I'd have to check again, but I mean, this, I mean, this should, you know, this should last a long time, it's not, it's not a cheap sign, so. And then the last thing I want to mention, I was very happy to hear from, I've been in touch with Kristen Van Note, she's been doing the kids club, Chatham's Kids Club, and keeping me kind of updated, we talked here and there about trying to get a director, so great news, they have a director, um, she just sent me that to, just this afternoon. Director's name is Hannah Jackson, she's a, she was a UPK teacher. Uh, good experience, Justin would be, I guess she's living, gonna, moving in East Chatham, um, she is gonna work part-time, uh, until December and then take over full-time, she's on leave right now for a little bit, so and then Kristen will, will bridge the gap after hours with the day-to-day, so I was extremely, we were both super happy for that, so it's great for our programs.
Can we just stop there for a moment? Uh, uh, first of all, that is really great. Um, but they've gone through a series of directors. Um, I'm still worried about sustainability of that program, and I I'm not sure what we can do to support them, but, um, are you aware of any, is anyone aware of any plans to make that more sustainable, because I think?
Well, they've made it more sustainable, because that's what they need to, obviously the school can't fund that position, but, um.
No, but we can, we can appeal to the right people.
But the good thing is, yeah, that, that's what they had to do when they had the committees, right, how much you're charging, how much, you know, to keep someone, but the nice thing is she's living here, she lives here, she's excited to be here, she wants to be a part of us, I mean, that's not commuting far, it's not, you know. So Kristen was extremely excited about this, so.
Okay.
And we'll do everything we can to make her welcome, and you know, I'll meet with her and anything they need, we always try to work together. You know, obviously with kids club, so that, that was, that was, that was wonderful news.
This is the after-school program, right?
Yeah.
And it's housed in the cafeteria, you know, one of the things we might be able to do is to make sure the staff is more aware of what they're doing, and they meet the new director, I know the school is not running, I know that. But that connection sometimes can be very valuable for kids who are either having difficulty or just knowing the kids are there, and when they are not, uh, at home, because they're here, and that is the case with most cases, so maybe the staff could meet me one day at a something.
Yeah, what is that, yeah.
To, to that point, when, when I was in Berlin, we did, uh, we had, our pre-k was run by Quest L3. And we did include their staff, and we didn't have to, and they didn't have to attend, uh, but we always invited them to our professional development. Um, so maybe that's one way to, to ensure that, you know, there's alignment and philosophy. I don't know.
Yeah, we can look at everything, as we, like, like Matt said, we really want to make this work.
Just good that we have someone.
And, yeah, someone that's, you know, like I said, excited to be here, so we, we will do everything we can to keep her happy and keep her here, so. Yeah. Yeah, they have, they have up on the, they have an area up on the stage where they have the little smaller area. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we are, we will have a communion sale always, wherever they were, we met with, and sometimes we work with. We have the day off, and they wanted to, you know, they could have the kids come in, we worked around their schedule so they could make some more money and make it more profitable. Yeah, yeah. So we do work hand-in-hand quite a bit with, with the director.
But they, they, as far as I know, they don't have any outside funding, right? And so they're, the economics are marginal, it's shrinking enrollment, they've got the same problem we have, but no backstop, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my kids went there, um, but I think that we started with Haven, who's now 29, so. It's been there for a long time. They've struggled a lot at different points, um, but they, they've always had a really great board. Um, and, you know, and I think it's a great service, ultimately, I think what drives us, it's, it's a great service for the families, you know, you're bringing little kids in early so that you get to work, so, you know, they're there late enough to get home to work, um, and it serves a, a real need.
That's all I have for my report today.
Awesome, really good news, that's, yeah. And on to some more really good news. R16, be resolved at the Board of Education and the Chatham Central School District, hereby amends the start date and term of employment for Andrew Port Superintendent of Schools to September 1, 2024, to June 30th, 2028, subject to the same terms and conditions of the employment agreement dated July 9th, 2024, setting forth the terms and conditions of such appointments and employment. May I have a motion?
Motion?
So, um, anybody with any questions? Tom?
Just to give, thanks.
One, just one more time, I know we've said this publicly a few times, but thanks, we love it in school board, sure. For their collaboration and cooperation on getting us, uh, our guy early kids.
So we definitely want that in a minute. Hey, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Andrew, this is wonderful. And I'm hoping, I'm gonna give a plug for the ice cream social tomorrow, at 5:15, it's at the middle, uh, the middle school cafeteria. And I think you may have some football players showing up, so you might want to make sure you have extra.
Principal, we kind of been collaborating on, it's just a very informal way to say hi to people. And I will be planning some other activities.
That's great, and it's really good for Chatham to get together as a community. Not even just to meet you, but to just have everybody just mingle and talk and, and just reconnect again, because, you know, summer's great, but they do, you know, it's good to reconnect in the fall, I don't know about you guys, but it was September, there's something special about it, as a kid, your program to look forward to that time, I mean, yeah, your sad summer is over, but it is nice to like see everybody again, so, you know, and that's good for grownups too, I mean, we all have our memories of that, so I'm, I'm like, looking forward to these community events, they're really
The Stewarts donate the ice cream?
So Stewarts is not for this event, but we are going through our services.
Stewart, Stewart's has been pulling back on that the last few years.
Yeah, they, they only donate to one district, I think. That being said, thank you for donating to one district.
Alright, so we're on a new business, um, it's the motion to rescind the list of policies that are there, these policies R17, be it resolved at the Board of Education, rescind the following policies, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any more questions, sons? All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Um, R17, or R18, be it resolved for the Board of Education, approve a merger with the Ichabod Crane Central School District for the formation of a boys-girls varsity bowling team in section two for the winter season 2024 to 2025. Should I read the executive comments, or just?
I'm in the motion.
Okay, motion. Anybody have any questions?
I, I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, I'm, first of all, I, I think this is a great idea. Um, however, I'm thinking about rolling forward into the future, when a conversation like this might come up again, looking back at this moment, and making sure that we, um, have the exact discussion now that needs to happen, that might need to happen in the future. So, um, the thing that I would want to know, that I think the community would want to know, is what, um, led up to this decision? Um, what are the, what are the, um, uh, the conditions, and, um, you know, how, 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 how was, um, how was this, uh, evaluated, I guess, the, the pros and cons of this type of arrangement? Um, and, uh, just ultimately, we're probably gonna have to do more of these, so.
What I'm hearing is process, how, how did we come to this in relation to what happened last time?
Record, yeah.
Yes, I, I agree with you 100%, because I believe this process was much smoother because it originated from the district rather than poured down, trying to put, I'd rather have a finished product brought to us, I prefer a plan. And, and all the research that went into that, I know Mike can probably source that.
So, as, as, obviously I've been advising the board on this, the last five months and a half since I started, of what was going on. So J, they reached out to JB, Athletic Director, they, they have two, maybe three kids, maybe two, but they wanted to get into bowling, they like bowling, and so this was a, a sport that's pretty easy, because we don't have a lot of kids either, so if you look at it, and, um, you know, the evaluation is alright, they have a couple of kids that want to come over to our program, we have five or six, two or three, we can easily field that team, make it a little more competitive, and bowling, everyone gets to participate um, at the matches, uh, they, I think they take the top five, but everyone gets to bowl. And what made this one easy is that they're gonna foot the cost, so we will, uh, actually our cost will go down slightly, because we'll split the costs of the, uh, you know, the league fee. But we go to East Green Bush and Catskill, so when we go up to East Green Bush, we're just gonna, it's on, Ichabod's on the way, that made it easy, there's no transportation cost, we pick them up on our way up and for a meet, um, I think for practices, they get up, we get up there, you know, however we get up there, but for the meets, we'll pick them up, and then drop them off at the school on our way home. And then for the meets at Catskill, we will have, the parents will take their kids to our school to meet at the bus, then we will drive to Catskill, and then their parents will pick their kids up at our school when we're finished, so there's no real transportation logistics to work out. They have a couple of kids, I think ideally they would, if they could ever grow their program, or we could grow their program, or, you know, you might not combine anymore, but since these are very, very small programs, um, this made sense financially, logistically, uh, little less cost, so that kind of made this one a little easier than some of the others, but that's kind of how we evaluated it.
So I, I have two questions, is, is did this, this is a byproduct, is this fruit from the conversation that the superintendents had, uh, in the, in the spring?
I, I'm not sure if it said, might have been, but that could have been, because they had a couple of kids, and they said, hey, we'd like to bowl, right, and they had a couple that, they can't form a team with two kids, so.
And then the second question I have is, the transportation, how does the insurance work on that?
We'll have a certificate of insurance from, uh, Ichabod, so it'll be covered there.
Mike, is this a yearly agreement, just, it's renewed at the end of each year, so?
That is correct.
And because some people will say, what if Chatham can field its own team? Um, at what time can you separate, and usually it's, it's year.
Yeah, this is, we had to get this in now, for, for the winter season, so it's due September 1st, so Ichabod already approved on their side with the board. So, pending our board approval, we sign the documents, uh, we get the board, uh, over to the section, and then we can do that, but you're right, if Ichabod drew their team to 15 kids, they don't need us, or if we drew our team to 15, and we didn't, we wouldn't, we don't do it anymore. But right now they're so small, both programs, it just makes it a little more effective, and gives kids opportunities.
It's great for the district, because we are neighboring, you know, we're right here, the kids know each other, and, uh, the bowling is super, because everyone does participate, I support all of it, but, yeah.
And it's a start, which I think we're gonna have more discussions, right, they had the superintendents talk with Sal about possible other sports, so we're gonna have to continue this going forward, I think, looking at other different areas, but this is a good start.
Now, some other sports, if we merge, it's difficult to un-merge, is that right? Is that, or is that not true?
That's, no.
That's not true.
You don't have to always merge, and you can
No.
If you bought a bunch of, you don't know, if you merged, let's say football, and you bought all the uniforms, now
Catwalk's kind of true, yeah.
And then if you said we're gonna change the logo and all that, then, you know, it's a little trickier, but otherwise, it's, it's pretty simple to do, to go in and out.
Yeah, and I think that it's a, you know, I'm confident that football will work, uh, this year at least, um, uh, of its own accord. But this gives the board a real opportunity to understand all the logistics, uh, mechanisms, all the considerations, um, at a fairly low financial impact. Um, because it's, it is a smaller sport, um, larger sports, you know, we may have to look at those in the future, but it's a much more complicated piece, and I think going about it in this fashion, learning our way into it, um, is a real smart approach, as opposed to but it's a much more complicated piece. And I think going about it in this fashion, learning our way into it, um, is a real smart approach as opposed to, uh, finding yourselves in over our heads and having to figure things out.
And I will get it, oh. I I will get an update. Um, I tried to reach out to JB. I'm not sure if he's off or, um, but I remember we talked about the, we have a modified football code, so we do have a modified program. And we had our varsity program strong, but the modified we were concerned about having, so I will get numbers on that. And as I stated earlier, Hudson does have their, they have their, they have their program this year.
Uh, I I have one more question, so it might sound dumb, but so are these going to be Panthers? They're going to be, I've had this work before.
With this one, with a couple of them in our team, I think that would be the case. We're not going to change, you know, I can ask JB how they're going to do that, but I would assume they're just, they're kind of joining on. When you have one or two people, usually don't change the other school, but I can talk about that with him.
Yeah, reading our notes, it looks like they're joining the college.
Yeah.
Website to sign up was for already for modified or no? For modified.
Sports signups have happened, yes.
It's happened.
And we have a modified coach being appointed tonight.
Yeah.
So, and I talked with Mary Ann when we were going agenda planning, I was wondering what the numbers are. So I'm trying, I want to get those numbers, but if we have a, but I assume if we're appointing a coach, we have the numbers to do it, but I'm going to, I'm reaching out to JB. I have a note out to JB to see what the numbers are, because I was curious.
So I just wanted to to mention about the whole athletic aspect of things. I was a representative with Sal's on, um, as representing the Lebanon when he put that group together, um, and he did a fantastic job organizing us. And what we have is a spreadsheet from each district that we looked at all of our sports, looked at all of our numbers, so that way we could be organized and see what needs are, um, especially if something came up last minute. Um, so Sal did share all that information with me and I'm happy to take the lead on that in the, in the region, like Sal did, and just continue on with that. And my, my vision is to continue working with all the superintendents who South started and their athletic directors to keep those conversations going and to make sure that our data is is accurate. Um, because as we know, this, we may have to look at this in the future, we want to be proactive on it. Um, instead of, you know, reactive as things come up. So I'm happy to continue, um, that work that Sal did and he gave me all the information, gave me all the spreadsheets. Uh, so we should be good to go. And that is, I I remember that conversation happened um, with Ichabod and Chatham, um, during those meetings. Uh, so I do think that was kind of how it began. Uh, so I'm happy to see some success come out of that, that group of the superintendents.
I'm glad you said that because that was my next question. I was going to ask if that was going to be new.
Yes, I I will definitely continue to take the lead on that.
Thank you. So where were we? We, we had a motion. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
We didn't have a motion? Yes.
Aye.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Right, that's a really long paragraph for R nineteen. Motion to approve the SECRA.
Secret.
Secret. Thank you, uh, for security cameras. Let's see, uh, so R nineteen, whereas the Board of Education at Chatham Central School District is considering, considering to undertake a project involving installation of security camera systems at all district educational buildings called the projects. Okay, so I'm just going to say the next paragraph. Whereas the board wishes to fully comply with its obligations under the state environmental quality review act, which is also known as SECRA, so, and the regulations thereunder with respect to the proposed action. So now therefore be it resolved that the board finds and concludes that the proposed action is a type two action within the meeting of six NYCRR six one seven dot five and therefore is not subject to review under SECRA and the regulations thereunder. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. This was our hundred thousandth past year.
This is the one for this year for the security cameras on all rebuilding educational buildings, provide coverage outside out of every building.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mike.
Any opposed? R twenty, be it resolved, the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda I through K as written. You have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions? It's a lot. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Now we're on to items for future agenda. Anyone in the board have anything to suggest for future agenda?
I have, um, and this is perhaps poorly timed, but a question or consideration, and maybe, maybe it's already been handled, but are we still labeling Columbus Day, Columbus Day on all the calendars? And then we just printed a calendar, but I just thought of it, so.
Has that been changed in federal?
It's, it's dual, at New York State, which is the only thing that matters for us, it's, it's listed dual. So we should, at the, at the very least, be doing something like that. Um, there's some people that are really upset about it right now.
Okay.
If we could even, like, even billboard, like, things that people are going to see. Some people are saying Indigenous People's Day, some people are saying First People's Day, um. Uh, but I think some recognition of the fact that the state has already renamed the day. So.
It is a point.
It's called Indigenous People's, so Columbus Day is, over the last ten, fifteen years, there's been a, um, a movement of Columbus Day to become Indigenous People's Day. And so the state adopted four or five years ago, a dual title for that day. Indigenous Peoples is more sensitive to thousands of individuals who lost lives and, uh, Peter Columbus arrived.
Yeah, I mean, Columbus was a slave trader. That was his job. That's the problem.
Yeah.
So ask me if the calendar was changed to, um, reflects the, the title change of the day.
So the day hasn't been eliminated, but the title of the day has been popularly altered to Indigenous People, to honor the victims rather than the victimizer.
Sorry, I didn't catch that before the calendar went out.
I have two business. Uh, I've written some things I'd like to build. Uh, over the last two years, supportive education has managed, uh, some significant challenges. It is highly unusual that so many longstanding leaders have vacated their positions in such short order. And this being said, each departure was reasonable and well deserved, with two retirements and one promotion to the superintendent's role in another district. And as a body, the board entered into this tran, this process of hiring, uh, in a transparent and inclusive fashion, um, honoring all those who have retired and, um, congratulating those, uh, who have been promoted. Uh, it was during this time that we learned that Dr. Root was moving to Vermont and accepting the superintendency of Rome. Um, I'm extremely proud of the work we have done this year, uh, hiring for John Thorson and Dr. D'Angelo. But the position of Dr. Root still remains vacant. As Mike said tonight, we do have interviews, uh, commencing at the end of August. But it was, it is with this sense of pride, not only in this board, but in the school and this community that as an accomplished district administrator, administrator, recipient of the district leadership excellence award in twenty twenty two, that I am announcing my resignation from this board to pursue the opportunity vacated by Dr. Reed in June. Effective immediately following the, the adjournment of this meeting, uh, I will be resigning. They seek only to bring my professional experience to service in this district that has been so important to me over the past twenty five years. And for the record, the board has discussed my interest and disposition with the school attorney to ensure that there would not be any conflict of ethics or legality, should I be so fortunate as to be given the appointment. In fact, there is no legal or ethical necessity for anyone to even resign from the board until they are an official employee under a compensation agreement. I am attending my, attending my resignation at this time, however, because I would be preferred to be considered for a candidate on the strength of my credentials alone and not by my membership and volunteerism on this.
Thank you, Fred. I appreciate, um, your transparency. Certainly appreciated your leadership last year, uh, leading us to this process. It was a crazy year and, um, you handled it professionally and beautifully and you're going to be really, really missed. Uh, but I also appreciate, you know, you trying to do the, the right thing and be transparent and, um, and the board will certainly miss you.
Thank you.
Um, because of this resignation, um, I have spoken with Chris Lushman and Fred let me know in advance so that I was able to find out next steps. Um, there are two options. You can have a special election, which she soundly said it's very expensive, very costly, going to take a lot of time. Most boards just do an appointment.
That's right.
Do an appointment. This is actually how I got on the board. I was an appointment with Destiny, um, it left and, uh, I believe Dawn, same thing, so did an appointment. So we're going to pursue that because in the interest of time, we have too many moving parts already, you know, brand new superintendent, brand new. We need to just get another board member. I do have somebody in mind that, um, many months ago said if there was ever an opening, I would, you know, I would step in. Um, so we will make this appointment, um, starting on September tenth.
Wait, wait, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with what's happening here.
Okay.
Um, so first, the board has to make a decision on how we appoint. And first of all, I I think appointing versus a special election makes a lot of sense. However, there's been some discussion that there might be a special election requirement anyway, so do we have to rerun that capital project? Uh, we don't need a, we don't need a special election right now. Okay. So the second thing is, and just for precedent, we have always put out, um, uh, a call for interest to the, to the community. There are two local newspapers, at least, and social media channels and requested letters of interest.
Okay, uh, when I was appointed, I don't remember that happened, but maybe it happened and I just wasn't.
We all, yeah, we, we always did that, but sometimes people didn't submit and then we had to go hunt.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, giving people a chance is.
Okay, how much time do you think that'll take?
It's, it's pretty fast. I usually, usually we give like, uh, well, it's, it's what have we done in the past? I think it was only done like two weeks before.
Okay, um, when I, when I asked that, you know, it just, it didn't seem to be a requirement when I spoke with council about that, so. Okay, you know, if we want to do that as precedent, um, I was just thinking in the interest of time. Okay, that's fine.
Um, yeah, I, the communication, uh, we've got other communications like this that have gone out, so presumably we could just copy the last one.
Okay.
Um, and run it for however long we did last time, which is I don't know what it was. What I want to say is it's like two weeks.
And, and then that'll actually put us in the same, same time, same timeframe. So that'll work. Our next meeting isn't until September tenth, so we can, you know, if somebody approaches us, that would be great. I do.
Yeah. And then we interview, but we don't, we usually appointed at the same meeting. We go back into public and then disappoint. Because that way we can make it happen fast.
Actually, I don't remember being interviewed here. It's kind of, hey, okay, okay.
You might not have been there yet because it's been done. The third way that I've seen it done is they have offered that position to the person who got the next highest number of votes in the previous election, and I don't know the legal requirement, but I, I think it was just as fast in many ways, doing it the way Matt suggested, and it, it doesn't leave a bitter taste in anyone's mouth about it. You know, now that the person that's interested isn't, may well be the best person. I would think so. But, um, just to, to do it that way.
Sure.
We usually don't have too many candidates to raise their hand.
Yeah.
Um.
Which is another problem for another day. We need more participation, but, um, okay. All right, let's do that then. Um, if everybody's agreed that that might be the best way to go forward, post it um, for a couple of weeks and, uh, we'll just try to and that will give this person a chance to talk to their spouse to see, hey, you know, I'm thinking about doing this, so that also buys one time to do that as well. And then, so what would be the next step? Um, anybody who's interested would reach out to Debbie?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so would we do the executive session on September tenth? Like before the meeting begins or how would that work?
Probably not do it.
What's that?
Lately, we've done executive sessions.
Okay, for something like that.
We didn't, we have to call the meeting early.
Okay.
Um, and then we go into executive session.
Right, well, we met with Alan, I think, they needed. It's like session pass, you can tag.
Yeah, well, we met Miles.
Yeah.
But, but I, I'm comfortable with whatever you work out with them scheduling, really.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. So we have a plan. That's a good break. It's just a newspaper.
But we've always also done social media.
Okay. However, you guys have done it in the past, I'm sorry. Okay.
The sta, the standard com is for board stuff. It's, it's the website, Facebook and, and the newspapers get notified for its access. I'm curious how the newspaper get a hold of it. It seems like, okay.
Okay, okay. I don't know why I don't remember any of that. Maybe it's because I was so drawn by the idea.
We've been lucky not to have to do that, but we.
That's true. I, that's, all I remember is next thing you know, there I was, maybe, you know, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I think. All right, if everybody is okay, then it's on. Yeah, it is, it is.
Fred, what are you going to do with your extra time?
Hopefully I'm going to be an administrator in a school district that I'm very fond of, and so that extra time will absorb pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
So are we ready?
No.
So, and, uh, we, now it's time for the second public comment period. Uh, these are for items that are specifically related to the items included in this evening's agenda. If anyone wants to speak.
I'm sorry, can I just, only because I'm also a teacher at the moment and this is the only job that I want my current employer to understand. This is the only job that I would be interested in. And it is because I'm, I'm a local boy. I'm a local district in a way that, you know, it, it is unique, but, um, but I don't have to know.
That's a very good distinction. I understand.
One more thing I would say, well, Fred, you are qualified for the position due to the degrees that you hold and you've had a lot of experience, I understand, and I, I personally wish you well.
Nobody speaks. Okay. So we can make a motion for adjournment.
Would you?
I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I know we're going to get the computer system fixed, but it was difficult for me because I could not access the private, um, board deck and therefore I don't know, I don't have an idea whose reservations we accepted or who was applying to your coach.
If I understand, I think everyone had that problem until we got here tonight.
Okay, I, I just have my computer here and I'm not questioning any of the things that we agreed to. It's just that I like to be prepared to know what it is that I'm voting on. And it could be just a Linda problem. It often is when it comes to technology. I know Harris has tried to help me and, uh, I think we'll get it resolved. Okay, that would be, that would be wonderful. Okay, that would be, that would be wonderful, and I have no problem with everything, anything done, okay?
Linda, do you want a paper copy? Do you have a paper copy?
I have just what I printed at the public seat.
An executive?
She did offer, so we'll just get that straightened out and then, you know, very rarely have a problem, but just so I can see it. No, I have two and a half. That's what I don't have. I just can't get that far. I have three different passwords that we tried and it's, it's really, you know. I've gotten some help at home with it, but it's just. I do, yes, and I will. It'll be fine.
All, second, okay, all in favor? Any, any opposed?